Got this all figured out.
I got you, I got you.
Don't pack too much. I'd like to call the annual public budget, budget hearing to order. It is now 6:00 PM, January 13th, 2015. First order of business is to request all present to identify themselves for the record.
Okay, Don Mook, superintendent.
Mark Hudson, current board president.
Tony Roncone, current vice president.
Scott Karen, school board number one.
Mike Clark, board member.
Kelly Whitmer, board member.
My question is my coordinator.
Katie White, our head.
What's your name?
Jason Martin, Columbian school.
Thank you. This time, item three. I'd like to hear any public input on the budget for the period of July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016. Hearing none. I'd like to close the budget hearing for today. Next order of business is the annual organizational meeting for the Columbiana Exempt Village School District, Board of Education. I am presiding over that as President Pro Tem. Second order is a records commission meeting consisting of the board president, superintendent, and the treasurer. That having taken place, third order is pledge to the flag. We'll all stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hudson?
Here.
Whitmer?
Here.
Roncone?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Karen?
Item number five. I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer? Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number six, election of officers for 2015. Do you have any nominations for the office of president?
I'd like to nominate Tony Roncone as president.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Okay. Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Next, nominations for the office of vice president. Do I have any nominations for the office of vice president?
Nominate Mike Clark.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Do I have any discussion on that motion? Roll call, please.
Okay, Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
I'll abstain.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mike, and congratulations, Tony. Item number seven.
I'd like to make a motion to consider requiring that all resolutions of the board be numbered consecutively as they occur during the year.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Item number eight.
I make a motion to consider the following resolution. Be resolved that the treasurer of the Columbiana Exempt Village Board of Education shall invest all available funds of the said board at the most productive rate of interest permitted by law.
Second? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Item number nine.
I'd like to make a motion to consider resolution on authorizing borrowing whereas for those who have come out of money and the treasurer to meet the current monthly operating expenses of the school district. Whereas it's necessary to obtain funds from the source in order to meet said efficiency, then incurred, be resolved that the treasurer of the Columbiana Exempt Village School District, Columbiana County, Ohio, be authorized to borrow the necessary amount, up to $100,000, from the bank that offers the most hazardous rate of interest. For him, said loans be solely made against anticipated receipts of property taxes and income tax exclusives of the tangible personal property tax receipts, spending reserve, and said loan not to carry over the end of the current fiscal year nor be made under any borrow authority that may exist pursuant to the provisions of Section 133.301 of the Ohio Revised Code.
My second motion. Any discussion? I'd like to just mention or note, I guess, for the record, that this is a motion authorizing that activity. That does not necessarily mean that we are currently borrowing money. It is just a motion or a resolution to authorize that action. Okay, with that, any further discussion? Roll call.
Okay. Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number 10.
I'd like to make a motion to consider resolution authorizing the request of advance of tax monies to be resolved. The treasurer of the Columbiana Exempt Village Board of Education is hereby authorized to secure advances of tax monies from the county auditor when funds are available and payable to the school district.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Item number 10 passes. Item number 11.
I'd like to make a motion to consider resolution authorizing payments of bills. Be resolved, the treasurer is hereby authorized to pay all bills overdue within the limits of appropriations.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Okay. Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 12.
I make a motion to consider resolution authorizing modification of appropriations. Be it resolved that the treasurer is hereby authorized to make necessary appropriation modifications to keep all the legislative accounts of the balance of need arising.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Motion passes. Item number 13.
I'd like to make a motion to consider resolution designating depositories. Be resolved that all banks that have an office in Ohio and they maintain FDIC insurance are designated as an acceptable depositories for the Columbiana Exempt Village School District for the purpose of purchasing certificates of deposit.
Second motion. Any discussion? Roll call.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 14.
I'd like a motion to consider setting the dates, times, and places of meetings for each regular meeting of the school board for 2015, as listed below.
Second? Anyone?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? And I'll just bring up, that is the date that we have been meeting. Is everybody good for that? We've now moved the time off to 6:00 PM, and I think that's something we already discussed. Is everybody on board with that?
Yes.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Okay, very good. Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 15.
I'd like a motion to consider a resolution establishing the service fund as provided in Ohio Revised Code 3315.1. Be resolved that the service fund of the Board of Education of the Columbiana Exempt Village School District be established at $4,000.
I'll second it.
Second?
I'll second.
Kelly, second.
Kelly, second?
I did second.
Yes, you did.
I did second.
Roll call, please.
Clark? Karen?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Despite destruction.
Sorry.
Item number 16.
I make a motion to consider establishment of rates of reimbursement for expenses incurred by a district employee unless established otherwise in a negotiated agreement while traveling on prior approved school businesses follows, as listed below.
Do I have a second?
Tell me.
I'll second that.
Roll call. Any discussion? No discussion. Roll call.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 17.
I'd like to make a motion to consider a resolution establishing the following petty cash fund. Impressed revolving type petty cash fund with an amount of $50 cash with disbursements amount to exceed $50. The treasurer shall be the custodian of the fund.
Second? Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Item number 18.
I'd like a motion to consider appointing Lori Posey, treasurer, as designee for the public records training of each board member, hereby directing her as such to attend public record training sessions on behalf of the board as required by law.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Item 19.
I'd like to make a motion to consider resolution authorizing the superintendent and staff between board meetings, as listed below.
I second it.
Discussion? Roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 20.
I make a motion to consider resolution authorizing superintendent to accept resignations between board meetings, as listed below.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes, and that motion passes. Item number 21.
I'd like to make a motion to consider resolution authorizing purchasing agent. Be resolved, the superintendent of the Columbiana Exempt Village School District is hereby authorized to act as purchasing agent for the Board of Education.
My second motion. Any discussion? Roll call.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Item number 20. Motion passes. Item number 22, getting ahead of myself.
I'd like a motion to consider resolution authorizing the superintendent to make exceptions to the policy 5113 relative to providing transportation accommodations corresponding with board-approved transportation routes to students living outside the school district boundaries.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes, and that motion passes. Item 23.
I'd like to make a motion to consider continuing the membership of the district in the Intertrip County League through the close of the 2014-15 school year, and empowering the superintendent, high school principal, and athletic director to make necessary arrangements for the establishment of the athletic stages.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes, and that motion passes. Item number 24.
I make a motion to consider appointment of the delegate and alternate to the OSBA Annual Conference as provided by Bylaw 0153. Delegate Mark Hudson. Alternate Scott Karen.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have a second. Do I have any discussion? Any further nominations? Hearing none. Roll call.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Abstain.
Hudson?
Abstain. Those two abstentions have motion passes. Item number 25.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the fee schedule for the 2015 facility use for building, use form provided with this agenda.
Second motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes, and that motion passes. Item 26. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second? Roll call.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. We are now adjourned, and that would be adjourning the organizational meeting of the Board of Education.
I didn't realize how hard Lori works during these meetings. Get it done. Congratulations. You get the message.
So.
So I guess we're going to call it where our, the meeting for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved. I'll second it. Roll call.
Roll call. Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Motion passes. Superintendent's report.
Okay. First order of business for, for me is to talk a little bit about you guys. And January is School Board Recognition Month. You know, I've been very fortunate in my position here in Columbiana to have really been dealt with the people who care about Columbiana schools from a Board of Education standpoint. You guys spend countless hours, sometimes talking to me, sometimes dealing with issues from the community, from parents. You're at events. The amount of time that you put in to being a board member is vastly incredible, and I don't know that people quite understand that you also carry on your own personal lives and your own personal businesses and your own personal work schedule. And you take great deal of time and energy out of your days to focus on the children here at Columbiana, the staff here, this administrative team, and we certainly greatly appreciate that. And I'm not giving you a canned speech from the, from what I'd like to read off of from the OSBA, it's just something that, you know, I really truly believe I'm fortunate to work with a great group of people that your first interest is Columbiana schools. And you make no bones about it, I think you hold myself accountable, you hold our administrators accountable, our staff, and they hold our students accountable. And we are not the, the best academic school in the area for any reason other than the dedication of what our Board of Education pushes towards our kids. You guys set the bar, and I think you set it to a point where it's achievable and it's a, a, within range of goal for us to achieve. And I think year in and year out, our school district stands tall among the many in this state. Mr. Buzzer, his building has received many, many awards. The high school, a blue ribbon. Dave yours was just recently a school promise. I've been contacted by the Ohio Department of Education that they are, that Mr. Buzzer's building at Southside Middle School is, is, is being nominated as a blue ribbon school. They quite possibly may get that nomination. The amazing amount of work that they do, they carry the lion's share of a lot of the testing that we, we do, and they take it very seriously. And our kids and our parents, I think, understand that we're working hard for their best interest, and in turn, you work hard for their best interest. So I want to give this certificate to each of you and your appreciation for Columbiana Board of Education. I have up here your appointment. Kelly is our senior most person here.
I think I'm the youngest.
Yeah, not an age, we're gonna be, we're gonna be the oldest. She's the oldest here.
Yes.
And, you know, some of you came in midterm, and there are some opportunities, and because you have an interest in the school, and that's why you're here. We really appreciate everything that you guys do. So, Scott Karen? Michael Clark? Mark Hudson? Tony Roncone?
Thanks, Tony.
Kelly Whitmer?
Thank you, guys.
One of the things that will have facing us here coming up in the near future is transportation issues, specifically bus purchasing. I have up on the screen, I hope you can see it okay. This is just a small portion. This basically is our bus fleet in front of you. We are not a giant transportation district with a lot of area to cover. We have purchased and have done a nice job of trying to stay in front of this in the last few years, working with Lori. Lori's been tremendous to, to try and make sure that our bus fleet is where it needs to be. We do have a couple of buses creeping up on us that have given us some, some difficulty. Almost all of these buses, at one point in time, we have purchased new. We purchased a handicap bus, bus number 14, a few years ago, from Struthers Schools for whopping $8,800. It was an amazing deal for us. We were in need of a handicap bus. At that moment in time, we weren't really ready to purchase or set out into purchasing mode for buses, and they happened to have one available. We have bus number 10, which has been a backup bus for us, which is now into action because it's a smaller bus that we send to some of the alternative locations for education across the two county area. And bus 10 had been our only handicap bus at one point in time, and that's capable of transporting our students with wheelchairs. Bus 10 and bus 14 both have lifts. At one point in time, we did have both buses out of service, which was a, which was some, with some, with two, two sets of stu, two students that have wheelchairs, and those parents were really, really helpful in working with us and getting kids to school back and forth during that time. The reason we keep two is because if one goes down, we have the backup, but it just happened to, we, we sent one in to get some repairs done on it, and the other broke down while that one was getting repaired. So it was unfortunate, but it did happen. Bus 14, it has been, has been repaired and is doing very well at this point, but Struthers Schools didn't get rid of it with 57,000 miles because it was a fantastic bus for them. So, you know, we picked up that bus at a, at a cost, and it serves, has served our purpose, but we're probably looking to, to get another bus, at least another handicap bus in, in service. That bus only has 86,000 miles. So, let's look at, I just want you to look at a couple, just to get an idea so you understand where we are. Bus four was put into service in 2014. We purchased that this past year. That bus has 14,500-plus miles on it. Not a lot. Not a lot. Most, if you look at the region of our district, depending on their route, bus, bus four is mostly in town and extracurricular activities at times. So, bus four isn't, isn't real, we're not really getting a great deal of miles on it. So let's look at bus two, or, sorry, bus one went into service in 2012, and it has 50,952 miles on it. That bus does, out through Firestone, Metz Road, and then also does a run to the Career Center down in Lisbon every day. So it gets a little bit more than some of our regular routes do. Bus one and two are about the same because both of those buses go down to the Lisbon Career Center. They do runs. But you can get kind of an idea of how quickly the miles can, can rack up on these buses. Our, our highest service bus right now is seven. Seven has 136,497 miles on it. It's probably one of the ones, and one of the older buses we have in 2004, that, that is probably targeted to, to come up as well, to, to replace in service. And the other one, although this bus 11 has 198, it's a, or I'm sorry, it's 1998, it has about 67,000 miles on it, which doesn't seem to be a lot of miles. But there's a reason. We've had lots and lots of trouble with that bus. It's, it's been put in as a spare. So it sits outside. It's one of the two or three buses we have that, I'm sorry, I think only two of our buses are outdoor now that we have the bus garage. But it is one of two buses that doesn't make it indoor, and, and it just, you know, they don't want to drive it. want to drive it. If they have option of driving a different bus, even, even our substitute drivers don't want to drive it because it breaks down and we've had trouble with it. So we use it as a spare in case we have one of our buses go out, we have another bus that we can put into service and keep our routes running. So it may also be one that we target, even though the mileage isn't too terribly high on it, it has had a lot of service needs. Bus 10 is a 34 passenger, it's a much smaller one, and it's doing fairly well. I don't have mileage on it at this point in time. But we need to consider the cost. If you look at what the cost of some of these new buses are, if you look at what the 72-passenger bus went for in 2012 and what the one in 2014 went for, and they are different brands of busing. So, you know, we're trying to stay consistent with the buses that we get, but we can, we definitely go through a program, and Lori's done a tremendous job of making sure that we can finance these fairly interest-free. And we can do this over a period of time that, that we won't take the bullet of this amount right, right off the bat. So I know that in talking to one of our parents with a wheelchair student, they are very anxious to see, you know, where we're headed with this bus 14 because it has broken down and it has had some issues. Talking to the bus driver, he feels like it's running better than it's ever run, but, you know, at the end of the day, we don't want our buses breaking down with kids on them and bus 14's certainly one we're going to target for service.
So how many miles are on bus 14?
Bus 14 has 86, 86.5. We bought it with 57 on it.
Bus 10, that's how many?
I don't have the miles on bus 10. Bus 10's one we weren't, not targeting for replacement.
So it runs good?
Yeah. And I, and I think for the price and what we've put into bus 14, we want to keep it around as a spare. I mean, having those buses available are fairly, fairly solid for us. You know, we also use some of our spare buses when we transport band equipment, football games and whatnot. We use the spare buses for that because, you know, if they get beat up a little bit with equipment on the bus, it's not a major deal. Some of the newer buses, we really don't want the band equipment being loaded into it.
So which one's the one that doesn't run good, then?
Eleven's not running very well.
That's the spare?
Yeah. The two at the bottom are spares right now.
So we're putting an average of 20,000 miles on the longer routes on a year?
Yeah. Twenty to 25 with field trips?
These are diesels or gas?
I believe everything's diesel that we have. We, a couple of years ago, when we put in the bus garage shortly after, I worked with Jimmy Marino. Jimmy Marino was instrumental in us getting our own fuel station in the back. So we do purchase our own fuel. We do save some money that way.
So we really haven't come up with a target of miles we're looking at replacement?
Yeah, I don't think it's a matter of miles. I think it's a matter of which ones we're experiencing the most issues with. If you went out, bus 14 is the flat-nose bus with the white top. It's the only one on our fleet that doesn't look like the other ones. And there was a reason, because we purchased it through another school because we needed another handicap bus for the reason of when they break down. You know, when they break down, you, we absolutely have to have another spare. We happened to get into a pickle this year with both of them being out at the same time. We didn't anticipate that happening. So rotation-wise, in talking to, you know, Kim Van Cleek and Lori, who's been really, you know, watching what we've done, you know, we're looking at the 2004s actually as the ones that would go out of, out of route service. Bus seven has been running fairly well. We haven't had a lot of problems with it, but it has under 36,000 on it now.
So what's your, what's your proposal every five or six years of replacement?
I think that she wants to put in another two. In talking to Lori, she thinks that this is the time to get two more in and out. So we're basically, our bus fleet's good for a while. I certainly think we're probably going to look at another handicap bus for sure. Now, one of those may go out of service, we may trade it in. We just don't get a lot of money to trade in on a bus.
Yeah, but they're not worth anything.
No. The reason we got this one for 8,000 is because that's about what they were going to, Struthers was going to get for it in a trade-in. And they said, listen, if somebody else out there wants that, I'd rather have it in a district somewhere. It's not, it hasn't been a bad bus, but it hasn't been a great one.
So when they haul band equipment, there's no children in the bus, correct?
Correct.
So why don't we just take one of these buses that are, because you don't get anything for them in trade. So why don't we take one of these buses that still run good, take all the seats out and use it as a band bus? And we can put some vinyl on it and have it really look pretty awesome.
You know what?
There was one that used to, yeah, I'm not sure what happened to that, how many years ago, but there was a white band bus for years.
Yeah.
And it was a short bus, but, you know, I doubt it was even here when you came.
I think it would be perfect. And then Scott, I certainly would want, not want to trade one of these in for a couple thousand when we can take the seats out. And do exactly what you're saying.
Yeah. It'd be awesome.
It would. It was pretty neat because they had an equipment bus and it was painted, so you knew what it was.
Yeah. We could take the band boosters and have them participate a little bit, right? Painting it white or whatever, white and red, put some vinyl on it and it'd be pretty awesome.
Yeah.
Arriving at games and things and events.
Yeah. I will definitely be in discussion with Mr. Hosteller and Mr. Buzzard, along with our band boosters, to talk about that being a potential option for them. And I'm sure they might take advantage of that.
Really, our rotation, as we look at these buses, the buses, they really should be on like a six-year rotation is what they, is the way I see it this, because of the miles that run. And even the one that has the lower mileage, we could really rotate that bus in to the longer routes that we can even out these miles. And those ones that have a little bit higher mileage, we're rotating those out. You see what I'm saying? So we can keep them down, so we're keeping all those miles running evenly. I mean, I guess the bus drivers don't fall in love with them, do they or anything?
They do. They, you know. Yeah, they're awesome. I mean, like kids with their jersey number, the bus driver falls in love with their bus number.
The reality is, it's just, it's protecting our investment and making sure that our investment, we're, we're working it smart, just like any lease company would do with any vehicles that they would have in their fleet.
Yeah.
Run them until they die. They rotate them into the mileage routes. But every six years, so every six years, 20,000 miles a year, that puts us at, at 120,000 mark.
Means you could look at, Scott, what we've been paying for in, since 2004, those buses were going for about 50, $55,000. Now they're, you're not going to, we're not going to get them on the 70,000. You're looking 70 to 80 on these buses. But, you know, I just think that it's important to have that conversation so that when we start looking at these things, these are major purchases that are coming up, you know, we're going to start planning and working with the Transportation Director on rotating. Our fleet was pretty old at one point. It's much better now over the last couple of years since our purchases. So, so I want to talk to you a little bit about building maintenance. You know, one of the things that I've heard over the last few years, specifically during the bond issue, is, you know, why aren't you maintaining your buildings or why aren't you maintaining and doing the things that you need to do to keep them where they are? Why did they get this way? And I wanted to bring your attention to some of the things that we've done just this year and some of the things that we have on the radar coming up that we build into maintenance. I met with Mr. Marino this week and we, we sat down and went through some of the major things that he's really done as projects over this past year, along with Mr. Martin and Mr. Boone and the technology end. And, you know, we've, we've put some, some serious money back into our facilities and we do every year, but it just doesn't get brought to the attention of anybody. For instance, you're all aware of the roof because that was one of the major purchases that we've done, but there's a lot of things that, that we do that are under that threshold of where, where we need a board to really pass what it is that we're doing. I mean, if you think about, we had 14, in Southside Middle School this year, 14 Univent motors blow out. That's our, that's our air exchange, that's our heat, that's the, those big units in the rooms. And we had 14 of them go and they're about $125 each at cost. We don't have somebody else come out and install them. Mr. Marino installs them for us, so there's no installation fee. He saves us a tremendous amount of money in the work that he puts into by knowing and being able to go in and do this kind of thing without having a company come in and install these. Lots and lots of places are going out and they're making these fixes, but they have to hire somebody to come in and fix them. They have a maintenance supervisor, but that maintenance supervisor calls somebody to get the work done. And Jim Marino does the vast majority of our repair work. For instance, the next one, Southside Middle School Storage, we moved out of the first classroom when we, when we moved the fourth grade up, over, back over to Dixon, we closed down that, that section of Southside. We needed available to the treasurer's office a place to store files. They had stored it in that first classroom at Southside Middle School on that first floor. We needed that classroom for instructional purposes. So we moved those. And moving that, Mr. Marino had to fire rate it because it became storage. So for about $2,000, he did the work. And he saved us a tremendous amount of money by doing it himself. Now, Mr. Boone, Mr. Martin, and Mr. Marino coordinated a large volume of cameras. We have 39, we still have a few more to go up. But we put eight cameras in Southside Middle School this year, which we had none. And we felt like that was a major safety concern that we wanted to address and we wanted to add to our ability to understand who is and where is in our buildings, what's happening. So we added eight cameras to all of our exterior doors so we can see the comings and goings of anybody that comes in or out of our facility. That was absolutely necessary. And that was about $3,000 approximately, if you take the total cost of what we purchased. And that's not the installation cost. Jim Marino and Josh Boone have put hours and hours and hours of time running cable and getting the installation of those cameras put in and then coordinating that with Mr. Martin to get them connected to our DVR so that we can record what's going on, so we can go back and take a look at tape. So that was, that's been some more things that have happened at Southside. Also, you know, replacing a garbage disposal, it's a $1,500 item. Jimmy Marino does it and saves us the installation in that. He goes down, he buys it at as low a cost as he can get it, either, either online or through local plumbing areas. And he goes in, he gets the materials and then he comes in and he finishes the work. He does the installation, saves us a great deal of money. We have, while reopening Southside's cafeteria, we have an oven and warmer we had, we bought refurbished, and he installed those. Heating system, the controller computer was replaced, it was about eight grand. And all these things begin to add up. At Dixon, we had to install a new grease trap, it was about $1,800. That was something that Jimmy could not do. The old one had rotted away. That's in the kitchen. Replaced eight Univent motors in Dixon because if you recall, the Mitsubishi's in those rooms are sort of an equalizer. They can adjust the heat a little bit, but their main role is cooling. The Univents still exist. We ran that, that system in conjunction with, and the Univents there produce the heat through the majority of the rooms, with the exception of the four brand-new classrooms. The Mitsubishi's handle that whole load. At any rate, he replaced eight in that building. Dixon had four new cameras added to it in addition to what they had, plus the wiring. The high school, 23 cameras. These quads make it almost impossible. It's beautiful, it's neat, it's probably the right way to utilize space, but at the same time, when you're talking about trying to get coverage for camera coverage on the comings and goings of people or whatnot, this, this building required a great deal more. Plus, we put a few exterior ones throughout. We have a great deal more people using the gyms, we have cameras now in the gyms, in case we have any incidents that go on, either during ballgames or whatnot, knowing also who's in and out of those facilities. High school dishwasher, motor and garbage disposal replaced, Jimmy Marino. We had somebody come in and do the high school scoreboard. It only cost us 120 because Jimmy had all the material and everything out and about and ready to go for the guy and all he had to do was come in, plug in a few things. Most of that was his travel cost. Ice machine in both the high school and Southside had repairs that needed to be made. Those are in the process of being done now. The high school football referee locker room was in desperate need of repair. Jimmy fixed up two, installed two showers and a sink. All, again, 650 is just material. He did all the work. People forget that even though we, we sort of rent that facility over there, we do maintain the majority of that facility over there at Firestone. So some of the things that needs are coming up that we really have to put on the radar. The high school, Southside Middle School parking lot resurfacing. It is in getting to that point of where we, we're starting to cut out sections and repair sections at a time. We're looking at a resurface. These are all ballpark figures based on Jim Marino. So the positive is Jimmy has a fairly good idea, but he goes a little higher sometimes than what they, what they really are unless, unless he gets quotes. So most of these are some of the things that he knows what the square footage, what Mike talks about, and he says that'll go up based on the cost of oil. Because those surfaces and oil costs are down and those costs might be a little bit lower. I actually think this is a low cost, between 100 and 150. Dixon parking lot will need sealed. We really need to look at that for the summer. The air conditioning units at the high school, I have quote on, quote on these 40-ton units from Gardner Trane. There are two units that handle the majority of the, this whole building. And those are at $90,000 each. They are 15 years old and as we begin, as this building begins to age, we are getting to understand that we have some, we're going to have some responsibilities in maintaining this facility, that we've had the luxury of not spending much money or many money at all over the past. Then all, this also has four rooftop units that handle building areas like this room. The auditorium has its own unit, its ballpark is 60,000. Dixon, the four new classrooms, Jimmy wants us to consider some kind of heating, supplemental heating in that facility. We just faced those units failing when we got to the lower temperatures underneath, downward, below, below zero, one, two, three degrees. We faced some heating issues. We faced some heating issues, they came out, refueled the system. We were able to get the heat back up in those rooms, but those Mitsubishi units get taxed when you get down around zero. Also, we're going to be resealing gym floors in all three buildings, we're looking at about $3,000 cost on that. Southside Middle School locker room showers areas need repaired, they need to be usable, they are not usable currently. Wrestling uses those in the wintertime, and junior high football in the fall. Track essentially uses those at times during the spring. High school football locker room boiler is leaking, so we need to look at a heating system, considering some forced air options, probably about $5,000 fee. And the high school football locker room showers must be refurbished, they are not We wonder why sometimes our kids don't shower after events. When it's pumping out cold water, and it looks like it's coming straight out without any kind of, it's leaking out of the faucets and whatnot, they just haven't been addressed, so. So if you have any questions for me, I'm sure there are probably a lot more things that we'll address from time to time, but those are some things that are on the radar right now that I think you need to be aware of. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Item number three, this is not a nutritioning report?
No report.
No report? Item number four, principal's reports.
I have Dixon's principal report, and you can also find it in Board Chair. And I just want to call your attention to the top. Dixon does appreciate all of that you do for us, Board of Education, your dedication and hard work, and we're grateful for your commitment, so thank you. Under curriculum and professional development, walkthroughs of observations and evaluations are continuing as the first round comes to an end here. All Dixon staff has received a professional development on the new PARC assessment, and that's an English-language draft writing map. Under student achievement, the PARC NOAA preparation intervention and enrichment continue for grades three and four. On Friday, January 16th, that will end our second grading period in our first semester, so report cards will go home on Friday, January 23rd. And IATs, which are intervention assistance teams, continue. And under PTO, the PTO was able to collect $2,123.30 in the box top drive. Our annual gala will be February 7th at the Lake Club, and the next meeting will be held February 18th, 6:00 p.m., right here in the media center. And then, under other, third and fifth grade intermurals have started in from one through February. And special thank you to everyone who helped make the eighth annual dating treat such a success. We had several families and staff take ornaments. And a special thank you to Mrs. Daherty, Megan Kids Count, Frank Armstrong, and Christ the King Church, Gamma Eight of Sorority, Pastor Jan and the Nazarene Church, Parkside Nursing Home, Mr. David Peters, Columbiana American Legion Post 290, Jamie Johnston, and the Electronics Depot, Hallway Insurance, Mr. Buckner, and the Columbiana Rotary. Enlisted below, you'll see the rest of our upcoming events for the month of January. Thank you.
Southside Middle School report, once again, as Mr. Muck mentioned, we're a possibility of a national award, and I'd like to thank the board for all their support, everything that we do. It couldn't be possible without the support that you give us consistently. Not to try to repeat anything that Mrs. Scharson already has mentioned, teacher observations and evaluations are continuing, we also are getting ready for PARC. Athletics, winter sports seasons, we're in the middle of our seasons. The numbers are good on all the basketball teams, I think I mentioned that back in December, very seldom, I think it's the first time since I've been here that we have all four teams with really good numbers on it. And right now, it looks like three of our teams will be number-one seeds when it comes to the tournaments this year. Both girls' teams and one of our boys' teams, right now, probably have the best records in the league. Wrestling numbers we love, but we will be hosting a tournament this Saturday in the high school gym, starts at 10 o'clock. We do have cheerleaders, one of cheerleaders who are leaving the team, some fans in spirit at our home basketball games, doing a fine job there. Some important dates that are coming up tomorrow. One of my favorite activities is the geography bee, 1:00 in the auditorium. It's, I'm always amazed at how much I don't know. I get a few state questions right, but when I get to African countries and things like that, it's amazing what the kids know. And then following that up on February 2nd with the spelling bee, at 12:45 in the auditorium as well. And you're looking ahead to February, we have our second round of parent-teacher conferences. And on February the 17th, state testing will begin, which will be a new experience force with some of the new testing procedures. And that is it for Southside Middle School.
Columbiana High School's report, first of all, thank you for your dedication and service. Mr. Hostel and I both would like to just really take a moment to thank you for everything you do, the important decisions that you make, and always putting our students first, so thank you. Academics and curriculum, next-generation testing update, we've been working, actually all three buildings have been working collaboratively on a schedule that will meet the needs and be able to share some technology resources and so forth to meet the needs of our kids. All students have been entered into the system for PARC. Mrs. Bacon had been out at training to get students entered into the system for Ohio Air, and we're pretty confident we're going to be ready. Teachers in all three buildings have been taking students to the computer lab and really getting hands-on experience, getting kids time with the computers and with the interface. Infrastructure trials will begin in a few weeks, and more to follow on that. Mrs. Waller is working on financial aid night, she's been working collaboratively with Cresview and La Tonia. That is tomorrow night between 6:00 and 8:00 at Cresview High School. On January 21st, 10th graders will be visiting the Career Center. Student events, the Winter Homecoming game will take place this Friday, January 16th, against Jats and Milton. Dance will be Saturday evening. Hall of Fame game will be Friday, January 23rd, and the Hall of Fame dinner will be the following evening. Winter Senior Night will be February 17th, with the boys' basketball game against Western Reserve. Students' community, Columbiana High School will host a blood drive Friday, February 6th. And as far as athletics and activities, boys varsity basketball currently is at six and four, girls are at 11 and one. Special congratulations to Bailey Muck, who scored her 1,000th career point last week and broke a school record for three-pointers in a game with six three-pointers, so pretty amazing stuff going on there. And in the wrestling arena, we have our first state-ranked wrestler since the reinstatement of the program. Congratulations to Caleb Ruper. And we've had at least four placers and one finalist in all of the tournaments so far this year. That concludes the high school report.
Thank you. Item number five, public input. An open forum will be held regarding the district calendar for the upcoming 2015-16 school year. Public input may be shared for consideration at this meeting. Anyone?
Okay. Item number six. Oh, we have three different calendars, right? Well, one of which is the same, one of which starts just a week earlier, and the other one is...
We're working on some calendars right now to put out to staff, and, you know, really got to wait till after this meeting to see if there's any public input on calendars and whatnot. But, you know, following this meeting, I'm going to have those out to staff, and we'll get some input from staff. And I'll get those out to you, the male, and you'll be able to maybe give me some feedback on what you like and don't like. And, you know, we're looking at probably three different scenarios from some of our administrative communication. One looking at starting a little bit earlier, trying to finish the semester by break, by Christmas time, or winter break, politically correct. And which is probably advantageous to the testing schedules, getting a number of instructional days in prior to the tests. And one that really looks similar to this school year, and then one that focuses on long weekend after each nine weeks. So, you know, it's interesting, some interesting looks, I'm be interested to see what kind of input we get from staff, so.
Item number six. Item number seven.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the December 2014 financial reports.
Second?
I'll second that.
A discussion? Roll call. Most?
Of course, Mark.
Mark?
A few things.
In view of the fact that we have an interim treasurer this evening, and all of some questions...
So that means there's no discussion?
No discussion. Roll call. Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Ron Cohn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number eight.
Make a motion to consider approving employment of the following personnel for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation accordance with board-approved schedules. Retroactive the first day worked, pending verification of all credentials for substitute teacher, Pam Schreiber, substitute support staff, Sarah Bacon.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call. Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Ron Cohn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number nine.
I would like to make a motion to consider approving the employment of the following personnel on a supplemental contract for 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules. Junior high track coach, Nancy Turpik. High school assistant track coach, Ryan Holmes. JV assistant baseball coach, Richard Prescott.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call. Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Ron Cohn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 10.
I move to consider approving employment of the following personnel as director, supervisor, or coach of a pupil activity program for the 14-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedule, pending verification of all credentials. Head varsity softball coach, Jerry Belster.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call. Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yep.
Hudson?
Yes.
Ron Cohn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 11.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of the following personnel as director, supervisor, or coach of a pupil activity program for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials. Head girls' track coach, Crystal Sambida-Botts.
Second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call. Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Ron Cohn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 12.
Make a motion to consider approving the following personnel as volunteers for a pupil activity program for 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent. Destination Imagination Team Manager Elementary, Karen Clark. Varsity baseball assistant coach, Jason Perkins. JV baseball assistant coach, Larry Dogman. And finally, JV softball assistant coach, Ray Steen.
I will second that motion.
Discussion? Roll call. Karen?
Yep.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Ron Cohn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 13.
I'd like to consider a motion approving a request for a change in salary for the following teachers, pending verification of transcript, Sarah Loney from BA to 150 semester hours, Zachary Erdl from BA to 150 semester hours.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call. Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yep.
Ron Cohn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 14.
I move to consider approving her recommendation of the Columbiana Public Library Board of Trustees, the appointment of Richard Sal as library trustee to fill the unexpired term of B. John Carles, which expires on June 30th, 2016.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call. Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yep.
Hudson?
Yes.
Ron Cohn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 50.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving 2015 annual Ohio School Board Association membership dues at a amount of $2,999.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call. Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Ron Cohn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 60.
Make a motion to consider approving medical leave of Allison Moran, high school teacher, to begin upon exhaustion or sick leave, she will be granted medical leave up until the start of the previous board-approved parental leave.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Roll call. Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Ron Cohn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 17.
I'd like to consider a motion approving an agreement for services for the fiscal year 2016, binding between Access Council and Columbiana Exempt Village Schools for the technology services. That full agreement has been provided with this agenda.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call. Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Ron Cohn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 18.
I move to consider approving the retirement resignation of Karen Visser, elementary teacher, effective May 31st, 2015.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
I'd just like to comment that I really, really hate to see another one of our senior instructors leave. Karen has been with us for, as she says, 34 years. Gee, it doesn't seem like that long, but I think I've known Karen for about the entire time that she has been here, and she is an excellent teacher who will be sorely missed. I, for one, am sorry to see her go, but happy to see that she's going to enter the next phase, so to speak, in retirement. Smaller comment?
Roll call. Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Ron Cohn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 19, president's report. I guess the first thing I'd like to do is just thank Mark Hudson, our previous president, for all his work and leadership. Mark's fairly, very highly thought of and represents our school board well. And obviously, just reiterate the rest of the folks that are up here at the table and our staff. Our school gets its accolades because we have people that are involved in our kids' education. And we have administrative staff who is, makes it their business to be efficient at what they do and to keep our education top-ranked. So I thank everyone up here, and this is a good, a good group of folks who put a lot of effort into making sure we make good decisions, and that is what makes things tick, so thank I'd also just like to reiterate what an accomplishment for our athletic group. We have somebody in state wrestling that we haven't been in it that long, and we're really building the program.
really building the program. And also, from a basketball standpoint, Bailey Muck is just a tremendous accomplishment for what she's, she's done. And being involved in the girls' basketball program, it's, she's been a fun athlete to That's all I have for today. Item number twenty. The OSBA...
New report?
Item twenty-one, the OSBA student achievement liaison report?
No report.
Item twenty-two, Columbiana County Career Center, board member report?
I guarantee these will become longer once again, however, this evening, the only thing I will say is that we have our annual organizational meeting scheduled for Thursday. And we will basically reorganize as a Board of Education with the appointment of new members, and I think, Don, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're now in a new world as far as the appointment and designation of board members for career centers throughout Ohio.
We are.
So, it's going to be rather interesting to see how this new grid idea works. End of report.
Thank you. Item number twenty-three, the next school board meeting, Tuesday, February tenth, two thousand fifteen, six p.m. Note the change, all six p.m. starts this year. In the high school media center, referring to the confirmation of this meeting, item number fourteen. Item twenty-four, to make a motion to consider executive session in accordance with ORC one twenty-one point two-two, for the sole purpose of consideration of any of the following matters. One or more of the applicable following items with respect to public, employee, or official employment, investigation of charges, complaints, unless public hearing requested.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call. Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yep.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Ron Cohn?
Yes.
Motion passes. We're adjourned. We're adjourned to the executive session.